I guess we can get going then. So I will open up the January 5th meeting of 2021 of the Hamilton Planning Board. It's a little after seven o'clock, 7:01 on our agenda tonight. We'll be reviewing, continue to review potential changes to our bylaw in terms of a flexible bylaw that we've been developing the last number of months. We'll also be looking at our zoning map and a possible line change to our business district. And we're business in minutes later on. So we'll just do our typical roll call of who is here tonight, given we are doing a video conference meeting. So Rick.
Rick Mitchell, present.
Yep, Marnie.
Marnie Cratch, present.
Bill.
Bill Wheaton, present.
Cory.
Cory, you, present.
Brian Stein and Chair and Patrick are planning directors with us as well. And I see that I think Pat Norton, who I spoke with earlier is actually on the call. He's potentially interested in becoming an associate member. Had an initial conversation with him today. Oh, there he is. So yeah, he has not submitted an application yet, but I think he's just assuming just to hop on tonight and see what, see what we're doing here and maybe get a little bit more familiar with the board.
He's interviewing you.
What's that?
He's interviewing the board.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. His, his will come later. But
So we all have to be on our best behavior.
That's right. That's right. So yeah, thanks for popping on, Pat. Appreciate it. So first up is our flexible bylaw and just to bring others up to date, we've been working on this for a number of months. Marnie and others have been putting together the language, which we now have hopefully a semi final draft that will be going out to developers shortly for comments. Bill has updated the density matrix and gotten that to everyone, which we'll talk a little bit about tonight, just to make sure we can finalize that or final draft of that. And any other issues with that we'll get into. So Bill, if you just want to real quickly run down what you did and I think it's pretty clear.
It, it's very simple. I just took all of Rick's suggestions. I think. And everybody else's suggestions and put them in and Rick has looked at it and made a couple of good edits. So the way the matrix works, if everybody has it in front of them, you start off with our current zoning and then you have the base density under the flexible law, which increments zoning up a bit. And the way I like to think of this last column is a developer has to pay something to get the density bonus pays into our open space fund. And then how many bonus density units he gets depends on meeting the criteria in column C, D, and E. And that gets him the, you know, number of extra, the total number of units that he can get on an acre in column F. And then what he has to pay to get the number in column F, what he has to donate to the town's open space.
Right.
Proposal. And it's looks pretty much the way it operates. You add up the percentages and multiply them, just like you do with the senior housing bylaw. The footnotes, I think clarify everything. The, I think the, the one addition that Rick Boroff wanted was an example. So down in the after footnote four, there's, it's good to run through an exam example. So if a developer came in with a 10 acre parcel, he wanted to set 50% of it aside for open space, maybe. You know, field or something like that, build in the woods. And then he, he was, he didn't like our, our units. He wanted to build whatever he wanted to build. So he didn't, he didn't get any points for that, but he got 50 percentage points in column E for adding the open space. So what he would be allowed to do is build 1.75 units per acre. This was if it's in our zone. And on his 10 acres, he could therefore get 17 and a half units. And the total fee for that would be $600,000 for all that extra units. That's what his total contribution would be.
Right. So 17.5 acres on the five acres that's left over.
Yes, he would put, he would put 17.5 units on those five acres left over. Now, a way to think about it is without any of this, he could take the 10 acres and he could get five units. Right? They would be two acre lots. So now he's getting 17.5. That's a pretty hefty increase in density. But he's also, the total fee he's paying is $600,000. That's a nice tidy contribution to the town in exchange for that extra 17 minus five extra 12 and a half units. So we look at it as spread out over a unit. It's only $50,000, give or take a little per extra unit. Yeah, we'll, we'll see what the developer says. But that's to me, you know, that, that, that'll do certain, certainly in, interesting if I was a developer. I would want to look at this and crunch the numbers myself, you know, do everything.
I'm going to make a comment. I have several comments actually, but I congratulate you and Rick because now this matrix is perfectly understandable. So the comments that I have, I'll just go stereo them. We have various footnotes. So for example, in column C, there's footnote two, in column D, there's footnote three. I think that we should adjust the footnotes so that in column C, there's footnote one, two, three, and four. So in column G, instead of having footnote one, it should be footnote four. It just makes sense that way. So that's a very minor change. Then in the example, there's 50% open space set aside, and then there should be 25% because that applies to the efficient units, which is how we get to the 1.75 times 10.
Oh, Rick changed that. I didn't want to have.
No, I didn't touch it. I didn't touch it.
Okay, let's, then, well, hold on a second. If it's efficient units, let me just check.
I think it is 1.75 then.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. He didn't want to do.
She's just asking for the 25% to be asked added to the.
Just to be added. Just to be added.
You added 50% for open space. She wants you to add 25%.
25% for efficient.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah. Just show the formula in that line.
Okay.
And yeah, that'll make it very clear.
And you know, if, if if this is acceptable, then I can incorporate it into the actual draft of the bylaw. I can make that change. Other footnotes, five, six, and seven, they're unnecessary because the maximum dwelling units per development is now set forth in section 8.1.5.2. The maximum of 100 dwelling units townwide is on 8.1.5.1. And the distance between developments is now in 8.1.10. So.
Those are the, that's the text.
That's in the text. Exactly. So there's no corresponding numbered footnotes for five, six, and seven. So it's just thrown in there, but it's in the body of the bylaw, just like in the senior bylaw. So those, those quote unquote footnotes, which really aren't footnotes, they're just.
They're not needed, you're saying?
They're not needed. They're, they're, it's in the text.
Okay.
So if we're, if we are in agreement that this matrix works, I can insert it into the, the actual language of the bylaw. And, and if I might be so bold, did, did everyone have an opportunity to actually read latest draft of this bylaw, which I have dated 12/21/20?
I have not read the whole thing in its entirety. No.
Prior version.
It, it did, it seemed to have grown a bit.
Actually, it tracks now the senior housing bylaw.
Right.
Not entirely, but substantially. So a lot of the length of it is because it's adding all the provisions that are in the senior housing bylaw.
Yeah.
Footnotes per page. So each page isn't a full page.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Right.
Oh, there's just a lot of footnote. So each page isn't actually a page, you know?
Yes. So what I did is when I added those provisions, I referenced the corresponding senior housing bylaw.
If you added them, why do you have to reference them again?
I did that. I did that for your convenience so that when I put those provisions into this latest draft, I, I basically gave you the provenance for that provision. So in other words, when you read it, you didn't have to think that I made this up out of whole cloth.
Okay, yeah.
I, I basically took it from the senior housing bylaw. There are certain provisions that were in the prior drafts that do, do not correspond to anything in the senior housing bylaw, but they are few and far between. And I can go through it if you would like, because I, I did have the opportunity.
Why don't we do the following, Marty? Why don't you make the change to the footnotes and the 25%? Insert this into the text of the bylaw. And then we'll send around one document.
Perfect. Yeah, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I had in mind, but I wanted to just ask the board members to consider certain provisions that are in this draft, which I think we should have consensus on. So, and, and there were one or two instances. I found some typos and whatnot. So in our matrix, for example, we reference you know, the energy and water efficiency. And, and those should exceed the mass building of plumbing codes. But in the language of the bylaw, I had in the prior drafts that the applicant utilizes advanced water and energy efficiency standards set forth in applicable building codes and in the rules and regulations of the planning board. So does that language meet with the board members approval, or should we modify that in some way? And Rick, this is where.
You were, you were the guy that started, started it. What do you, what do you think?
So this is section 8.1.9.3 on page four.
Go ahead.
Right, okay. Well, I think since in the footnote on the matrix table, it, the says exceeding mass building and plumbing code. So it would be in conflict with the language that you have there now. So I think we need to make that so that it's, it is complimentary. Oh, if we could just put that language in energy and water efficiencies. Standards that meet, that exceed.
Exceed.
Yeah, that exceed existing building and plumbing codes.
Yes, exactly. So.
Do we want to give a percentage on that?
That's a good question because that, that will come up and they're going to say, well, what does that mean? So sure, why don't we, we could put that number in there and see what comments we get, if any, just as.
Does one number work? Or do you need a separate number for plumbing and electricity? Or I mean, you know?
Oh, I, I don't know. Those are fair questions and I don't have the answer. So I think for now, we'll just add that 10% as a placeholder and then we're going to have to do some research and figure out. You know, and if they come back and say, well, these are absolutely insane. You really need to do X, Y, and Z all to the good.
So I'll say something to the effect exceed by 10%.
Yeah, I think for now that's fine. That's not, it's not egregious. I mean, the building codes are already pretty strict, but you know, 10% is not crazy.
Okay.
Let me make another suggestion of something that we probably ought to look at too. Is that when our calculations come out to a portion of a unit, how do we want to deal with that? Do we want to round up? Do we want to discount that portion of the unit? Because that's something that, you know, I think has the potential to be, you know, somewhat substantial. And I think that we need to, to nail that down.
Yeah. On our prior.
Well, the problem is there's a lot of cases where you have a fraction when it's per acre, but if you had a five or 10 acre development, then the fraction goes away. So you wouldn't want to round, you wouldn't want to round the columns up. You might run around the, the total development. Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of the total density number. Let's say you come out at in a 48.1 unit or 48.8, you know, do you want it to be 48 or 49?
We've always talked about it going to a lower number, rounding down.
Yeah.
Yeah, previously we talked about the lower number, that it would be rounded down to the next or whole number.
To the whole number.
I'm fine with that.
That should be in the footnote then.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
There should be a footnote that says total development units as calculated, rounded down to the nearest whole number. Yeah, that, that would work well.
Marty, when you're finished with the text questions, I, I'd be want to go back to the matrix because I just have verifying edits.
Oh, do you want to do that now?
And I don't want to interrupt your flow.
Okay. Okay, in section 8.1.1, modification of lot requirements. This is taken from the Wenham bylaw, which is back, you know, many months ago that, that we started with the Wenham bylaw. So I'm asking the board whether or not we want to keep that provision or exclude it. Does it add something? Is it redundant? Or is it a problem? That's on page five, 8.1.11.
I don't, I don't have a problem keeping it because it's it's not requiring anything.
Right.
Can you just give me the gist of what that section references?
I think it's really just encouraging flexibility. As, as Brian says, it doesn't require anything. It just encourages. The question is, does it conflict with the other thing that I added, which is from the senior housing bylaw, which is the table of dimensional requirements? Is there a conflict between those two? So that's 8.1.14. And notably in that table of dimensional requirements. I don't know where that noise is coming from. In the table of dimensional requirements, that's the same as the senior housing bylaw, except columns H and I, I didn't put letters on the different columns, but the last two columns of the senior housing bylaw I eliminated.
Yeah, that's referencing, you know, a development that wouldn't be, you know, a condo type development. Which is fine. That would, this doesn't require that we do that. That'd be for individual lots.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, you're right. It could, it does kind of conflict with the dimension requirements.
I have, you know, I have no strong sentiments either way, but since a special permit is in a sense discretionary, this provision essentially is a bit redundant. And, and you're right, Brian, it, it seems more directed to maybe single family houses.
Yeah, it'd be like, it'd be like, yeah, it'd be like if you came for a flexible development, but you, you subdivided everything into individual lots. Right, for, for single family type units.
Which you might well do. Cluster development of some kind, right?
Absolutely.
You're putting 20 units on five acres, but they're all clustered and then they have all the open space around them. So.
Maybe. Yeah.
I mean, that's, I, I actually think that's a reasonable use of this, but I don't know if we want to limit, we want to set limits on this as opposed to allowing the developer to sort of, you know, juggle the pieces in a way that he or she wants.
Yeah.
If we, if we have this covered oversight plan review.
Right.
Then I'm not sure we want to have dimensional requirements.
Right, you're already dictating the maximum number of units per acre that you can have anyway, which is already kind of dictating your lot size.
Your average lot size, but you're, you're not.
Right.
So if somebody, if somebody, you know, has the 10 acres and he puts 50% into open space and he's going to, let's take the example, he's going to put 17 units on, on the remaining five acres. He doesn't need to have them evenly spaced on those five acres. He might want to attach them as townhouses or, you know, not, and they, they, they could, they could be. I, I would say let's not do the dimensional requirements.
So you, you're in favor of eliminating section 8.1.14?
If it deals with dimensional requirements of lots, yes.
This actually, if you look at it, it has, it has a minimum parcel size, minimum parcel frontage. I think it's not really talking about lots in the.
That's for, that's to be eligible for the development.
For the development as a whole.
As a whole. And then, and then I think the other provision is more.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
That just sets up.
You were talking about the, you were talking about the lots.
It might be created.
Um, that might be created. Yeah. Okay. No, no, no.
As long as it's, it's clear that this table of dimensional requirements. And again, it could be simplified, right? It, you could just set a minimum lot size in each zone or minimum area that.
Minimum, minimum parcel size?
Parcel size, right.
Parcel size. Don't use. Parcel size.
Right.
I like to keep lot and parcels separate.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the one thing.
That should be almost right up at the beginning. This, this bylaw only applies to land parcels of this size and this, in these zones.
Right. The, the one thing I would keep here is somewhere in the bylaw is, you know, the vegetated buffer between a development and a, and a butter.
A butter. Yeah.
And then I think through, through the review process, well, we can set or suggest distance between structures.
Yes.
Instead of, instead of defining.
I, I wouldn't want to do, do that in advance. No, no, no. This is supposed to be flexible. It's not just shrinking otherwise identical houses or whatever.
Right. Does that make sense, Marty?
Uh, I'm now thoroughly confused. So.
Eight, one, fifteen, number three, sets the distance between buildings.
So are we advocating eliminating section 8.1.14?
Yes, essentially. I think.
Because there's another, there's another section dealing with setbacks and landscape buffers. That's section 8.1.21.
Right. But you, like Cory said, you've also got the one, 8.1.15 that talks about minimum separation between buildings, which I think we should get rid of. At least that portion of it. Number three, 8.1.15, number three.
Yeah, it's redundant.
I think you can keep the setbacks and landscape buffers section 21. We should just set, we should set a minimum parcel size in each zone to be eligible for this.
I think that's true in the senior housing bylaws, isn't it?
Thought so.
I thought it was 10 acres, but don't quote me on that.
It's actually, and I, and I'm glad you mentioned this. Now, see if you, I have the table of dimensional requirements in the senior housing bylaw and also in section 8.1.14. And the minimum parcel size is 80,000
Okay.
square feet for all districts. So I have an error in my table. There's a typo. So.
Let's just say that in the beginning that it's a minimum of two acres.
Why don't we make this simple for someone who's going to have to synthesize all these comments? If we look at the ta, table of dimensional requirements, what columns do you want to keep and what columns do you want to eliminate? Because we have the minimum parcel size, we agree we should have that two acres. Do we want to have a minimum parcel frontage?
I don't think, oh.
That's frontage for the whole thing.
This is all a Form B. It's not, it's not a Form A. It's not Form. It's a Form B. It's a subdivision.
So Marty, is your typo in the dimensional standards, the 125?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So it should read 80.
I think, I think you can get rid of the entire table and just say
A minimum.
That minimum lot size in all the applicable zones is 80,000 feet.
Parcel size.
Parcel size.
Okay. So we'll eliminate 8.1.14. Do you all have stink bugs that appear in opportune times?
Yeah, just rename it minimal, minimum, yeah, minimum parcel size.
And I'll put it in building and, uh, I'll just put it in dimensional standards, but just I'll work it. You, you all will have another opportunity to look at this. So I will just put that one provision in there. So we don't want to worry about front setbacks, side and rear setbacks. And there's another provision already about buffers. So.
Yeah, you've already got the buffers.
Yeah. So we'll just, I mean, I could leave the table and take out the last four columns.
I would, no, I would completely, it's redundant. You don't, if it's, if they're all 80,000, we don't need a table to tell us that.
Right, well.
I think, I think in 8.1.2, in eligible locations, you can just insert minimum parcel size of 80,000 feet. Right?
Okay. Okay, just let me be clear though. Are we leaving 8.1.11? Is that staying or going?
I think we can keep it.
Okay.
I just keep it. I think it furthers the point of the other standards applying to the full parcel of land. by suggesting that anything that doesn't conform on a public road has to be interior to the project. And it encourages clustering, yeah, 111 does.
Okay, we'll keep that.
So Peter must be thrilled with this process.
What's that?
Peter must be thrilled with its process. In terms of watching the planning board in, in action.
Patrick, yeah.
Patrick, I'm sorry.
No, it's all, it is, I, I am following, I'm learning in different sections, I'm keeping everyone on mute for the benefit of my kids going to bed, so.
Oh, that's, that's, that's fine, no.
Okay, the other, I, I didn't make a note of this, but it's something that I, I actually rather like, but such an 8.1.26, it's the flexible development pre-application conference. That's taken from the open space bylaw, but I think it's worthwhile having in here, you know.
Oh, yeah, we always do those.
Yeah, so. So, um, that's it, I had a couple stylistic changes that I don't think amount to much, and if, when you, you review this for the final time, if you don't pick up on my very modest stylistic changes, those were the, you know, the big issues that I wanted to make sure there was consensus on before we distributed. So if you want to go back to the matrix, Rick, add it.
Yeah, I think there's just a few tweaks to the matrix and plop it in here, and then we're, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Just for the sake of.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, what, what was that, Cory?
I just wanted to say, for the sake of letting Marty know, I think because you copied it from the senior housing, there's a lot of 8.2s, it should be 8.1s just throughout.
Yeah.
Because I think senior housing repressed everything as 8.2, and ours is 8.1. For instance, we have 8.29, but 8.128.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. If you, um, see any other typos like that, you know, just send me an email, I don't think that's, um, an issue. I just saw three instances of that.
Yeah, I'll come through it again, buddy, I think there's a handful of them, it's not super consistent, I mean, super common to see.
I'm just flipping through it, I just saw those three, they were at the end.
So we'll clean that up, and then I think we can just send out the final draft to everybody, then we can, I'd, I'd love to get this to, to developers before our next meeting. I don't think we need to have a, a formal vote on.
No, we don't.
So, just to send it out for comments.
Yeah, we're still in edit mode.
Yeah.
This is in pubescent stage. So just to comment on the example on the matrix, Bill or whoever's editing this is going to add the 25% for efficient units. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, so total units allowed equals 17.5. For clarity, I'm wondering if it would make sense to then insert times 50K equals total fee paid 625, just so they can follow the math?
I, I was going to do that, I was going to, for the 625, I was going to put how that was calculated. So in parentheses, I would put, you know, one, 1.75, let's see, well, I would do the formula, 50K times, uh, you know, F minus A. I just, I just put in parentheses how the formula would work to get to 625.
Yeah, no, no, I'm talking about the example under four.
Yeah, that's what she said.
That's what I would do. I, I probably edited just a little bit, so it's crystal clear.
Yeah, because I, I want them to be able to read it and go, okay, that's how they multiplied that, now they multiply that, and rather than going, okay, where did that number come from? Um, and just a question, and it may be because I'm math challenged, in column F, um, the formula is B times in parentheses, 1 plus CD and E. I'm wondering, uh, do you need the 1 in there, because you're taking the column then, and we'll say R1A, there's three units, um, for develop a lake or, and then you're multiplying.
You do need that, you do need that.
Okay.
Okay, because you, you, the, the 25% of the 70% applies to column B. So if you don't have the 1, then, I mean, you could express it differently, you could say, units allowed on top of column B, but if you want to say there's total units, then you have to have the 1.
Okay, I'll defer to, uh, to you on that one, I just was, when I saw that, I was, okay, how did that arrive?
You know, it, I, I know this is going to go wretched in the works, but it may not be a bad idea to have an example, another example in the, say, in the R1A district.
That's what we, we had talked about last.
On, 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 uh, say, two acres.
Yep, that's what we talked about last meeting, is doing an example for each of the zoning districts. Just so anybody reading this would get the gist.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think if you, if you do what you say you want to do, Marty, and like, in this example, run through all the calculations, you know, and spell it out, I think, you know, people would get it. It works the same way in every zone. Right, I mean, as long as, as long as you're spelling it out in one example.
Oh, we'll find out. I think when we get to the, if, uh, once we get this and make it public, we're definitely going to have to do three examples, very simple, clear examples.
Well, Rick, do you want to send me those examples and I can, um, add them? Are you confident enough in your mathematical skills to do that?
You mean examples?
For the each district.
I'll do it, and I'll promise I'll get it to you.
Yeah, let, they'll do it.
Couple of days.
You promise?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna, you can't, you can run, but you can't hide. Okay, so are we done with that?
Yeah, so can we get this wrapped up in a week and then get it out? You send it out to everybody and then, provided there aren't any issues, then we, Patrick can send it out to developer for comment.
Well, let's, um, before we summarize what our next steps is, can we go through the questions to developers? Because I don't want to just send this out blank and say, what do you think? I want, I want specific questions answered, get them to think about, and get us answers on, you know, so I put together these, these are not the end all and be all, and they may need to be edited to be, uh, accurate and clear, but I wanted us to have something, I didn't want to make this really complex, but I wanted to ask a half dozen questions just to get some answers back to some of the questions I have, and I think Ward needs to have. Um, so I wanted to do, wreck them with these questions.
Well, here's, here's the, the question I had. So these are the questions, and, and, and I, and I have some comments with the questions themselves. And I'm an inveterate editor, so you have to bear with me. But, uh, the overall, um, question I have is, how do we want our answers? So if we have these questions, should we expect to have the answers in writing? In which case, I'm thinking maybe a developer is going to look at this and say, man, I don't want to take another test. I graduated from high school or college a long time ago, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, answer these questions in writing, but, you know, it may be helpful to have the answers in writing, in which case, we might want to allow spaces for the answers. Or, the other alternative, do we want to have the developers come in and have a discussion with us on the record as to the questions that were asked?
I think Marty's right, in the sense that you don't want this to be a questionnaire, yes, no, true, false. What you want is them to think about it and to give you some ideas. And say, this, this won't work at all, or I wouldn't, this wouldn't influence me at all, or this is terrific, maybe you could do a little more of this, or, or, you know, have a more of, um, unstructured. This is like in survey research, there's all this question, you want to, want to give people, you know, A, B, C, and have them check, check it off. Or, and that's very good if you, if you're 100% sure of what you want them to say. It's just a question whether they say A or B, as opposed to having a more of a free formed discussion and an unstructured questionnaire, it's called, and you could, you know, you could just.
Right, so.
You could, you, yeah, you could add an extra paragraph in the top saying, you know, we're interested in what do you think this would work and how, how we might improve it, and then just let them go.
So I would suggest then, I think that's a good idea, uh, is, um, at the, on the last paragraph, said, we would like then to schedule a Zoom meeting, an in-person Zoom meeting, if that's not redundant, um, or an oxymoron. Discuss these questions and get your feedback. So then it becomes really easy, they just can read them, think about them, and then when we get a meeting set up, is go through those questions.
Yeah, we would have to have, have, invite them to a meeting to discuss these questions, and any questions that they might have as well.
Right, we just want to get them thinking, and, and these are questions certainly I'd have, um, and people may have more questions, but I thought this was just a way to start, sort of actually get them focused, why are we doing this? Where are we going with this? And, you know, some, uh.
No, I, I like that, I like the just kind of open dialogue discussion over, over Zoom and, yeah, we can ask whatever questions we want, they can ask whatever questions they want, and.
Yes, yep.
You know, just keep it open and.
All right, so why don't I read, so just to be efficient with our time here, certainly can reword this so that, you know, it says we look forward then to have an in-person Zoom meeting to get your feedback on these and other questions, and that we have an answer to those that you, you have. And are there questions that should be asked or that aren't being asked here? Or are these sufficient to get the, um, uses?
Yeah, just have them, who are we sending this to, by the way, you have a list?
Well, that's my next question. So Larry Smith would be the obvious guy, and he's already said he is interested in looking at it. I'd love to send it to the guy that did Patton Ridge, who's named Barry, like.
Be Barry.
Be Barry.
Yeah, and, um, we might ask them, or if, uh, we don't know others, we certainly can send it to Tom Ford, but I want to send it to people, people that actually.
Who's the, who's the big developer in town, Beverly, the Beverly guy?
In town yet?
Not in town, in this area. He does all the big, what?
You're, you're thinking of, uh, Beverly Crossing.
Oh, he did this stuff in Manchester.
Well, it was, it was Steve Dodge, but he's no.
Yeah, what's his company called?
Beverly Crossing. It, it used, it used to be Windover Development, it's now.
That's what I was thinking.
Beverly Crossing is now the, is now that.
Okay, well, you certainly should send to him.
They, they're actually doing massive development, this might be too small for them.
Who did the boulders in Winham?
That was Windover at the time.
That was a long, that was old Windover, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's Beverly Crossing.
Yeah, yeah, so Windover was construction, then they, you know, development, and they got construction, and then development split off as Beverly Crossing.
And we certainly could send it to them, that wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I, I know them, that's, we can, we can do that.
You're in a, I mean, Brian, you're, you're certainly in a position to come up, better position to come up with this list than, than I am.
Yeah, I mean.
No?
Yeah, there might be a couple others, um.
I'll make sure we don't rule out single family guys, Tom's an awful small guy, who else is doing?
Yeah, no, I've, I've got a, I've got a friend who does development and has done some things like this on a slightly smaller scale, but he, he could comment probably.
Well, if we're, we're, if we're interested in getting, um, comments from a fairly significant number of people, we could, uh, put a notice on the town's website and also, um, something in the local paper.
I think it's better to, I think it'd be better to contact, contact them personally.
Yeah, yeah.
Send them a copy of the, of the paperwork and, um.
Oh, I have a list, I have a list of 17 developers that we sent the RFP for Willow Street to. So, um, yeah, they, they certainly could be, um, you know, if you want a broader regional, um, mix of people, then we could use that.
I mean, for this, my advice would be to go with people that we kind of know a little bit, given they've done stuff here.
Or in the town next door or something.
Comments.
Yeah, true.
Be more real, if that's the way of saying it, but.
Well, yes, people are entities that have familiarity with the town.
Yeah.
You know, who know what the constraints are and, and.
Well, could, could we? If you send it to some random person that doesn't know Hamilton.
Could we send it to Peter Gordo and ask him specifically to look at it?
Yeah.
He's with Beverly Crossing now?
No.
To my point, Brian, I think, uh, Dave Traeger has a very good affinity to design and, you know, workability with surrounding properties. I think he'd definitely be able to give us good input.
Okay, yeah.
Are we thinking in terms of inviting these developers to our meeting on, uh, when is it, the next one?
No.
Well, we got, we got, yeah, we need to.
I think the soonest one would be the early February meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to give them two or three weeks.
If, yeah, if we get this out early next week, then, okay, I think we can do February, first February meeting.
Okay, that'd be February, is that it?
Yeah, and it, depending on everyone's schedule, they might not all be able to attend that meeting, so maybe we have, uh, place for both February meetings, depending on what happens.
Okay, and then we could set a time limit and said, you know, we, we expect this to run, you know, we respect your time, we expect this to run, you know, 30 to 40 minutes maximum, just so they don't think, oh, God, we're not getting.
Well, the other thing, um, you could give them an opportunity to choose which day works best for them of the February dates.
Yeah, I mean, it, again, we have to see who's interested in even providing comments, right? And then if it's, if it's five people, then, yeah, maybe we split them up on the two meetings in February. Because it might, it might be, unless they all have the same comments, it might be tough to get five people's comments and questions and back and forth in an hour.
Right, and we want some structure, I mean, if it's too loose, then the information is hard to collate, if you will, and, and.
I think, I think this list of questions is a really good start and will frame the conversation and, you know, they're going to have questions for us too, so.
Yep. So I'll redraft this, uh, you know, saying we'll hold a Zoom meeting tentatively scheduled during February to gather your comments and answer questions. And answer your questions.
And Rick, if you wanted to send me what you come up with, then I can even send you, um, the edits that I made to those questions, if you're interested, and then I, I can get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, so you'll. Okay, so you'll send that to me and I'll add those in?
Yeah, if you, if you're, if you're in agreement with it, they're not, you know, really substantive, I, I had one more question and I just re, reorganized the questions a little bit and just tightened things up a bit.
Okay, the surgeon was at work. So send that to me and, um, I'll work on that and then send it, uh, to Patrick and then um, Bill will finish his, um, samples. Send that.
As soon, as soon as you get me those examples, Bill, I, I will take the matrix as it stands now and just drop it right into the bylaw and, um, and then we can circulate that and get it out, it'll be.
I'll try and do it tomorrow, okay?
Yeah, great.
So we good, Matt? Right, moving on, um, review and discussion of possible zoning, um, area change to the commercial district. So Patrick, um, just kind of bring us up to date here and we talked about this a little bit last meeting.
We have, uh, talked about the idea of expanding the downtown business district to include the property that, um, accommodates the, uh, Public Safety Building, Council on Aging Building, Carriage Lane, Residences. Uh, and then extends northward on the, um, right, which would be east side of Bay Road. Uh, so that would, um, be, yeah, I think that ends up about nineteen acres, I think.
Yeah.
But, uh, in any event, that's a, uh, you know, a look ahead at potentially what uh, could help that Winthrop School property become uh, a use that may be more complimentary, uh, to the downtown. Whether it's, uh, mixed use, whether it's higher density residential, smart growth. Uh, you know, or any other sorts of complementary uses that uh, would fit within our business districts only, uh, which right now is reasonably broad. Uh, but it was the idea of extending that use, uh, northward on the eastern side of Bay Road.
Okay, and you, you had sent out a couple of, um, of maps that were, some were used in previous studies.
Can you, can you call us up, uh, Patrick, or, um, not?
No, I can't.
Oh, so.
I have one, um, that I could try and share with you, it's from our original master plan that has a good aerial outline. Unless you want to go someplace else.
No, go ahead.
Can you share the screen, this will be a.
It's, uh, shared for everybody.
Yeah, you can, you can share it, right?
Can people see this?
Momentarily, yep.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's the right one.
I checked with Patrick and he confirmed that this is the outline of the current, uh, commercial zoning district.
Yep.
So at the top left, you'll see Willow Street, bottom is, it's not named, but that's, I think that's Linden.
Yep.
Uh, and then it goes behind the shopping center. And back up to Walnut Road to where the Cumbe's is, and then goes down the, uh, right away for the gas line. And then does that zig left back up to, um, Bay Road. So what we're talking about is, and, um, this is an arbitrary. Uh, but taking that, um, line that uh, cuts off from the, um, gas utility right away. And sort of straightening it a little bit and, uh, running through, either running it a lot, uh, further in on the right-hand side capturing the sidewalk or farther in and capturing Carriage Lane in its entirety. So you would go down that utility right away, another inch on this piece of paper and then take a left. And encompass all of Carriage Way and then the, I think those are two houses. And then the, set the senior center there on the top right.
Uh, let's see, that is the Public Safety Building.
Oh, okay, okay, so, um, alright, so then the senior center is the last one. It is outlined in white at, or, um, top right side of.
It's right across from Asbury Street.
Say that again?
It's right across from Asbury Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's sort of the section that we're talking about changing and then and it doesn't capture this, guessing it would either incorporate the Public Safety Building or wrap around it and then capture um, Winthrop.
Right.
Where the Winthrop School is.
Right.
Which is what we're trying to do here.
Right, so I guess the question is if we want to do, well, we, I think we want to do this, but where's the line go?
Right. So.
I can tell you that it does make, uh, homeowners nervous to have their residential property rezoned to commercial. And I think there's definitely a potential for pushback from the residents there on, uh, Carriage Lane.
Oh, definitely, so the alternative.
It's also possible that, uh, people on Patton Drive, they're not going to be, um, I think they'd much rather have a school as a neighbor to the west rather than a business district.
Well, that's a given, we know that they're not going to be happy, but they're not going to be happy about anything. It's because people do not like change.
So the Winthrop School is done no matter what?
Now, again, this is a, looking ten years or more down the road.
Probably fifteen.
Right, right, and, you know, I, I think the big question is, I think it's twofold, is if at some point, Winthrop stops being a school.
Right.
What then does it become if you don't do this?
It's town on land.
Yep.
It's non-taxable now.
And enrollments have been dropping.
Yeah, no, I, I'm saying, let, let's assume the town goes for a new, a new elementary school. And or, and or at least, and or at least gets rid of Winthrop as a school. And then what does that site become if you don't do this?
Can I just ask a question, if, you know, and, and this is really just informational. If, if the Winthrop School is redundant, that, that's a, seems to me to be a better built building than the Cutler School. So why wouldn't the Cutler School be the one that was decommissioned, if you will?
Uh, because that's owned by the regional school system, it's their land.
I see.
So the, the, the gripe that officials in the town of Hamilton have is that we're subsidizing the Hamilton Wenton Regional School System by relinquishing a, I think it's twelve years. Um, site that generates no revenue for the town. And so in a way, we're paying twice for our school, or schools. And so.
Right, and I think the other part is, is, I, I actually agree with you on the building, but is that the best site for a school?
Right, locationally.
Right.
In proximity.
Given right where it is, I mean.
Lockwise, and a lot of pragmatics lead into that.
Right.
I mean, if I was sitting in between the two schools and saying, you know, what's more central? So Winthrop site looks pretty damn good, if you were starting from scratch, right, whereas Cutler's kind of off a little bit, I mean, you could, you could develop the Cutler site residentially, it just would, you could put another five houses from Woodlawn Meat on it, I'm not sure. If you wanted to do Winthrop residentially, what would you do?
You can't.
Build a road from carriage over to the driveway and put five more units in there? Five single-family houses?
Yeah, which to me, you know, given where it is, I mean, yeah, on, on Cutler, you're right, I mean, it's all residential, almost all residential right there. But here, you know, given your, the proximity to, you know, the park, the rest of the downtown, the Public Safety Building.
What's, I mean, you look at it, that's a wonderful place for a school.
No, I'm, no, I'm saying for something other than a school.
Right.
Oh, I don't, well, there's.
So listen, if you consolidate the schools, you're talking about three hundred and fifty students. It's, would end up being about a ninety million dollar construction project, probably a two-story, um, building. So it would be a huge impact on that, um, on that neighborhood. Um, in terms of traffic and in terms of the school populations and playing fields.
So that's, Rick, is that an active, actively thought out proposal?
No.
Basically decommission Cutler and to take the Winthrop site and.
No, the, the proposal is to decommission Winthrop, regain the town's uh, land and use it to a higher value, uh, because right now it has no value to the town other than it's a school site. Um, and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have been talking about this, uh, for a number of years. Uh, Sean is, was very much, Errol Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, was very much in favor of this. And he thinks the Board of Selectmen would be in favor of this. Um, so it doesn't preclude, if it's commercial, it doesn't preclude, let's say, down the road fifteen years. The consensus is, let's put a consolidated elementary school on the Winthrop site and close down uh, Cutler and give it, you know, a trade for the town in some form, the town sells that. Um, making this commercial is not going to preclude that, so that could happen. This just opens the door for at some point in the future, additional uses to that land.
Why don't we do that at the time?
Say again?
Why don't we do that at the time, at such time as it comes clear into focus, what's going, what the town would like to do with that site, then we'll rezon it. What you're doing is you're going to get a lot of people upset for something that might happen, might not happen, ten years into the future. And I think you'd be, there's no reason for it. You don't have, you can't, it's owned by the town now, you don't have any proposals to redevelop it, you don't, it could be one of three or four different things and wait till, wait till all of that is decided, it is actually the school board says, yes, we want this land, or we don't want this land, and then we, and then we do this, why? Why set it all up and get everybody upset now?
Well, that certainly is the path of least resistance, um, but try doing that when you've got a proposal for the town gets rid of, uh, the school there, it's at Cutler or some other site and decides it wants to turn that site into a commercial. Imagine what the neighbors are going to say then, because then you've got an active, um, demolition of the schools. And you've got proposals for reuse of that property that can include mixed use or some other commercial use. That's when it's going to hit the fan in, in very intense as right now doing it, it's going to really have no impact, it's a, done in the future, people will say, yeah, why are you doing this? And we'll explain this and have the same conversation we're having now is it offers an opportunity and flexibility for the town to make investments in the future. Um, and, and this is all being driven by revenue, and if you got your tax bill in the last day or two. Um, and you've seen what's going on, on Facebook, people are, are now getting riled up. Well, that's not going to be, that's, that's the tip of the iceberg, because when we go into override next year, our tax rate's going to be going up significantly over the next five years. Um, people are going to be going, okay, so how are we getting out of this financial squeeze? How are we going to remain a sustainable town? So that conversation needs to happen and people need to understand, you know, uh, the the costs and, and, uh, sources of revenue. This may be premature, I'm not wedded to this, I'm not, um, pushing this, but this is something that's needs to be discussed, it needs to be in the conversation. We could wait until the financial sustainability of the town really becomes a hot topic, which it will by next town meeting and the following, um, couple of years, that's fine too. But I'm just saying, this is something that Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have been advocating for, for just those reasons.
Yeah, I, I think it, all it's doing is providing additional potential, future options for that property, that's it. Right, and potentially, it makes it more valuable down the road if something were to change. Right, than what it is right now. It, no matter what happens. Right, it's just allowing other options than what there currently is, that's it.
So here's a suggestion, um, how about we float a potential change, we agree on some redrawing of the lines that includes Winthrop. Just start having this conversation in the public, not as in we're bringing this to you and it's coming to town meeting and we want a decision, just start a conversation and you know, it could take a year or two or, or more. Um, and it may never, it might not happen, as Bill says, if people may just say, no way, Jose, we don't want to deal with this. Okay, that's fine, but I think we owe it to ourselves and the public, our planning group, to think about um, the future and how our land resources are going to be used to sustain town operations.
My comment with respect to this, and, and I certainly appreciate, um, the benefits of, of having flexibility. But the business district as a business district lacks cohesion. And, uh, you know, personally, I think that Cumberland Farms is an abomination and, uh, just thinking about what could happen on that site, I have a hard time contemplating how a businesses on the Winthrop School site tie in to the businesses on Railroad Street. Because walking in that area on Route One A, and even at the other end of Willow Street where we have, um, uh, the different repair shops, is, is, is not very desirable. It's not something that people would do, they wouldn't park their car somewhere and walk, um, to this Winthrop School site. So, you know, I could figure, I could contemplate that there would be another, like, little shopping mall. The way there is one now by the train station, which I don't think really would do too much, I mean, it would generate revenue. But how would that make, you know, the downtown area more desirable, more aesthetic? Um, so I think that if you're going to have this discussion, you, you know, it's, it's devoid of context. You know, what type of development, oh, whatever would come along, well, unless there's something concrete, it, it's hard to it's hard for me to be unequivocally supportive of it, because I just see a traffic nightmare at the end of Asbury Street. You know, depending on what goes there, I mean, it, to me, it's more conducive to residential development. You know, depending on what goes there. I mean, to me, it's more conducive to residential development of some sort than. Businesses. What type of businesses are we talking about? I mean. God forbid, it would be another gas station.
There won't be gas stations by the time this developed.
Oh, I hope not. Yeah, we have so many now, maybe an electric.
I've I've heard that. I've heard that argument about Cumbies and. Yeah, in in our, in a perfect world for a number of us, yeah, we wouldn't have three gas stations. Well, really two in our town and one in one, I'm just down the street. But what I've always told people who don't like Cumbies. Is you should have bought the land then. Right? Like it was a gas station for a long time. Cumbies bought it from whoever owned it prior. And continued that same use. Right? It was an allowed use. It, yeah, is it ideal? No. But. You know. It it is what it is in this case, and I I don't like that argument that, you know. You don't like it there, right? It it was.
Well, no, but it does. It it has a, it has a a kind of a deterrent effect on making the downtown cohesive and.
I I agree with you that it's not that cohesive right now. That's something that the HTC has talked about for years is about how to make. Downtown more cohesive and more attractive. And obviously, it all comes, for long story short, it all comes back to money. To be able to do that and. You know, Railroad Ave isn't the only place that has shops on it, right? There's there's things up and down Bay Road that you, you know, that are. That have their shopping as well. And yeah, you just have to cross, you know, through or by a gas station here and there. Okay, but it doesn't. It's hold on, it doesn't preclude something nice from going in on the Winthrop site at some point. I mean, who knows? It doesn't have to be a strip mall, doesn't have to be a gas station. It might be something really nice. It could be a really nice mixed use project that actually has residential.
And and I and I agree with you, but I I think that when when you, if you want to. Have the town support this, I think a vision might be. To have a vision. You know, would be helpful.
I agree that a general. Vision for downtown. Is needed. I don't agree that we should pick winners and losers on individual sites.
That's inviting. Once you go down that road, then you're and you become a target. The point here is to. Deftly. Just expand it as a future option. We don't know what's gonna go in there because we won't be around to determine that. It's just laying a footprint for the future. That our heirs can figure out what they want the downtown to look like.
The the town owns it. The town can generally.
Control.
Control. Who buys it? If if that's the case.
And under what circumstances is redeveloped? What uses, you know, the town would have the ability to prepare and orchestrate in RFP. The same way that the HTC did on fifty nine Willow. And I think, you know, the possibilities for control are wouldn't get better than what they are. In that this is town owned property.
That's right. You have more control than you would anyplace else. We're not, we're not gonna send.
Guys, there's also the issue of, I mean, as I look at it on my aerial. It's. Playing field size. School board always wants to run out and spend a million bucks and get a turf field, get more playing fields. I mean, if you're actually gonna tear the building down anyway, the town owns it. Terrific location for a playing field. Three hundred feet by three hundred fifty feet by two hundred feet. It fits a football field or whatever, you know, it's a regulation sized field.
That's something we're short on in Hamilton. I feel like we've got plenty of this.
The school board apparently is always looking for playing a playing field. They're always talking about how they don't don't have the money for one. Well, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't bring in revenue, but but it it saves the school board from spending money. Let's put it that way.
No, actually, it doesn't because they would have to buy it from the town and then they would have to build those fields. While they've got a crumbling infrastructure right now in the buildings that they own. They have a nine million dollar, it was nine million dollars five years ago, plan for turf fields. They've done nothing with. And and we have five hundred thousand dollars a sale of the patent. Property for Patent Ridge that's been sitting there for. Oh, eight years doing nothing and nobody's raising money for playing fields. So the schools are in serious financial condition.
I I understand that, but I mean, I I I understand that. But. You know, as I look at it, it's a really nice location for playing 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 field and the town owns it. They they would have to. They could, they could renegotiate their share of this school system by giving the land. There's there's, I mean, it wouldn't be. It would, the school board would have to spend some money, but it wouldn't. It will be, wouldn't be that bad a deal for the town.
We already have a really nice location for fields and it's behind the high school. Right? I mean, once you get, once you get that to be a turf field, it can be used so much more or turf fields, I should say, is what their plan was. And that would alleviate the need for other, potentially other spots.
I didn't realize whether that was an. A viable proposal. I thought it was wet back there. There's a lot of debate about that.
No, they commissioned a, they spent half a million dollars and commissioned. A plant, a three phase plan put in turf fields. And so they did the preliminary, you know, feasibility. Layout and preliminary design and cost estimations and it's been sitting there. Going nowhere because it doesn't have a champion. And while you might think it would look. Nice there, I I I think what people aren't getting is we're in serious financial trouble. Now. Those of us that are on the planning board can weather that and and do so easily. That's great. But that's coming and it's coming and it's gonna be more and more difficult to maintain our. Town as we like it. Without sacrificing. Either services or developing land. And it's coming to our town whether we want it or not. So we can say we don't like it, we shouldn't do it, I don't like that. That's all well and good. But it's not going away. So as I said, we can let this just sit for a year or two. Until the climate changes, until people have a better perspective on. Potential options. I'm just saying that this is coming. We have an opportunity to take control and. Direct what our future looks like in a very passive way. By expanding this. So.
I know that we have somebody that wants to comment, but um, real quick, I I think I like your idea of just engaging. You know, the public and the and the butters, you know, maybe sooner rather than later, not next week, but you know. Within the next few months to just start the discussion on this and. In a more invited public way and see where it goes and.
Yeah, I mean.
Really get into the weeds and explain to people what's going on and. You know, that we're, yeah, there's there's no immediate change here. It's it's, you know, like you said, ten to fifteen years out at a minimum. So. You know, start there, but um. So I know we have a, Mike Palazzolo wants to comment, so Mike, go ahead.
Hey, everybody. So. You guys are just touching on something that I've really wanted to discuss for a while now. We're talking about. Increasing our tax base, potentially turning this Winthrop project into a, you know, uh, land into into commercial use. It it just, it goes back to everything that I tried to do on Willow Street years ago. And taking existing property, we're not, there's no more land is getting, is is gonna be out there. We have what we have for land. If we want to increase our tax base with the land that's available to us now commercially. The businesses and the use of the of that particular property needs to be more thought out. And I I'm a perfect example of it. If if you look at. My neighbors to the north. Dodge Tree is assessed at rough, I guess, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And Welch and Lamson's assessed at four hundred some odd thousand dollars. I'm five times, my property is smaller than both of those properties, yet my assessment is five times higher. So. I think that. Moving forward, I don't know if there's a plan to look at existing properties and what what the uses for those properties should be limited to. Or should be, you know, directed towards. But I just, I just think it would be, I just think it would be very helpful if something like that could happen. So. You know, somebody doesn't come in and and buy the Winthrop, just say you sell the Winthrop property. And another tree guy wants to go over there and 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 not. Not have anything built on the property and the property is assessed at. You know, half of what it's paid for ten, ten years later. I don't think that that's gonna help our tax base. We need to have a plan in place that when a piece of property is transferred. That the value increases, not decreases. And if you look at the, at what's happened over the past few years. Some of these commercial properties, the values are going down. It shouldn't be doing that. We we want commercial properties, residential properties too. You want those values to increase every year, not to decrease. And it's for the most part on the commercial stuff, it's going in the wrong direction. So. I just, I just wanted to chime in on that. I appreciate what you guys are all saying and, you know, this tax, this tax issue. It's been an issue and it's not gonna get better unless we come up with a plan to figure out a way to increase the tax base with the land that's. Available to us.
You're, you're absolutely right. And you know, like like we said, though, like I think given the town owns Winthrop site, you're not gonna just sell it to anyone. There there'd be, you know, just like we did for Willow Street and RFP process and be able to control what what you'd like to see there to a point. But, you know, in the in the broader picture, you're absolutely right. There is a very finite amount of developable land left that. You know, and Rick said this over and over, you know, that isn't wet, that isn't conserved, that, you know, doesn't have other restrictions on it and you need to. You know, in in a thoughtful way maximize the value of that land. There you, it really comes down to that and and you're you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Well, then we should just. You know, I guess I like Rick's proposal of having some kind of floating your trial balloon. You know. What, how do you, how do you float a trial balloon? You have a hearing? You can't, you can't have a hearing because we don't actually have. A propos, without a proposal. We don't want to quite go there. What do you, what do we want to do?
It's almost like a reverse pre-application conference, right? I mean.
Well. Can I, what I would suggest is. Taking this map or some. Something similar. And readjusting the lines, they will be arbitrary. In a potential redrawing of the zoning, commercial zoning district. And. That will capture Winthrop and connect to the existing commercial district. And then just start having this conversation and say, hey, here's an idea. Maybe we do two options and say, well, here's a, you know, radical option that captures part of Carriage Lane. Or all of it. Here's a minimal disturbance that just captures sidewalk. And whatever town owned land, you know, goes to the property line of those on Carriage Lane. And just say, you know, this is what we're talking about. And we certainly could take it to the Board of Selectmen because on its going, this is something we need to do. Just say, hey, here's some options. What do you guys think? Now, now they may, you know, certain members may not like it at all. But we started a public conversation. And in in a low key fashion. Now, Bill, you're right. People say here and see with, they're not gonna be happy. They'll be arguing against this. Why are we doing this now? All those things typical of any kind of change you wanna contemplate. But. We'll get impact, feedback. And it, and we may decide, gee, this is just too much. Uh, investment in time and energy. At this point in time.
Well, I think that that if you want to have that conversation and and, Rick, I, you know, I really don't mean to be argumentative because. You're right, I did notice my taxes went up. I I think people have mixed emotions about these types of things. They want their taxes to remain low, but by the same time, they don't want to see the whole character of the town. Radically altered. So, you know, one of the questions is what what the town, do the people in town? What could they envision there that would be. Aesthetically pleasing, satisfy the town's need for for. Revenue, but also not. Be unsightly, not create an inordinate amount of traffic. There's already a lot of traffic there at that intersection. Particularly in the morning and that, you know, around the time that school lets out. What what could people envision there that would. Create revenue but not be. You know, really unsightly in in.
Well, yeah, I I think that's a fair question. If 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 it wasn't a school at some point, what?
What could it be?
I I would like to say, what would you like to see there that isn't more open space?
Well, and the other thing we could do is we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar master plan. Funded and specifically, we could ask our esteemed planning director. To incorporate because one of the components of a master plan is commercial. Development and uses is do some. What's the word I want? Game planning, game, gaming options, you know, and say, hey. Here are some options for expanding your downtown commercial district, and if you did. Here are some potential uses and maybe actually have. You know, a structured discussion and maybe even some schematic drawings to say, hey, here's something potential. Is this something that you? Put in vision on this site? So you have an education process that is structured and over time, the people get to look at options and. Voice their opinion.
Well, I think that's exactly right, Rick. I I mean, if you have. Schematics. Or even photographs of development in other towns on sites similar to this that. Are appealing and and don't detract from the New England character of the town. That that really enables people to get a sense of what could be there. As opposed to the frightening scenario that I portray yet another gas station or. Some kind of a a development that just created a lot of traffic and and, you know, was kind of ugly and. Didn't do much. Particularly since this is a a classroom patent park.
Right. Sure. And you know, you can't, and we don't know yet, but you know, for example, let's say you decided to expand the commercial district and you took part of. Uh, Carriage Lane, maybe the front houses and. Is there's nothing to stop you from building a nice bicycle and walking path separate from the sidewalk and Bay Road. You know, as a way to encourage safe pedestrian and bicycling. To Patent Park. So there's many ways to to slice the. The pie here, so. I I'm gonna suggest that approach and maybe if we're doing that, but I think that might be the way to move forward this discussion.
One of the things that I'd like to to put forward is that six years ago, the HTC did a really good job. Of outreach. It's pretty far in the rearview mirror now. However, the basic comments that came from. Residents here in the town of Hamilton is that. As they saw downtown grow, they wanted to see new businesses in development. That are indicative of a new, of a New England village. In my opinion, what this property has the potential to be is exactly that. You know, because the town has the ability to make that level of requirement upon future. But, you know, because the town has the ability to make that level of requirement upon future developers. Don't you?
Exactly.
D C numbers?
No, you're, you're, we, we've done lots of different, or numerous different. Studies and plans to show what downtown could be. And you're right, we got a lot of feedback on what people want in their downtown. We did, you know, for Railroad Ave and Part of One A, some really nice renderings of what Railroad Ave could look like and. You know, that's what we wanna see throughout the downtown and, you know, doing a development like this would, well, again. Down the road, but I would hope that it would. Help to start or. Continue, you know, the downtown beautification. And you, you're right, Marnie, it's right across from Patton Park, which is a, a huge asset. So it needs to be, it needs to be something that's beautiful and really nice to look at. And again, fits in with the character of the town and. You know, is used and. You know, has. It has things in it that, um, you know, people wanna use. I mean, we, you know, before this year, we all saw. You know, tons of people at Patton Park in the fall, you know, for football and what have you. And. If there was something right across the street that they could go to and. Eat, grab a cup of coffee, whatever, that would, that would be a huge, hugely beneficial use. Um, so, y- you know, I, everybody loves honeycomb and everybody wanted bakery forever. That's, that's doing really well. So think, things like that are what I would love to see go there at some point.
Would you come up with a list of? You know, maybe potential restrictions? Cause I, I think the first thing with anybody in town is everybody's afraid of the same thing. They're all afraid of the unknown. So if, if you, if you, if you say to the community, hey, we wanna turn that property into commercial property. And leave it at that, everybody and their brother is gonna be trying to hire an attorney to fight that. But if you came out and said, hey, listen, we wanna turn this into a commercial property and these are the, these are, this is why. These are the, these are the types of businesses that would be allowed, or maybe these are the types of businesses that won't be allowed. You know, we're not gonna have another oil transfer station or a gas station, whatever it might be, whatever the board would, would think. You know, would, would make this property be po- uh, positive in the community.
Yeah.
I think that should be the forefront of it. This is gonna be a commercial property because we wanna do this. And if you guys came up with a list, it sounds like you already have a list from the H D C comments from a few years back. I, I don't know, maybe go at it at that angle. You know, come up with the list of the positive things that could be done there. And this is why we wanna make it a commercial piece of property. And maybe come up with a list of exclusions. So the people in the surrounding area, especially the next door neighbors or lake mans, then that, that, they're not afraid of what's gonna be there.
Right. No, you're, you're right. And we, we also wanna hear other people's ideas, you know, on top of what we heard from, you know, the H D C. Seminars years ago. But, you know, I, I think, I think you. You, you sell it to people as being, you know, an asset and a benefit to, you know. It being across from Patton Park and it being an extension of your already quaint little downtown. And hopefully it will help, um, spur further beautification in, in your town between. Not just, not just the town itself doing it, but also other businesses doing it and property owners. Um, I mean, obviously, what Rick said a little bit ago about, you know, our financial issues. You know, none of this, none of this beautification that we would love to have happen is gonna happen anytime soon. There's just, there's just no funding for it. But again, as, as you go down the road and you develop these properties and. To their highest and best use. You know, there may be money for that. So. I think it has benefits down the road other than just a, you know, quote unquote, another commercial building or use there.
Well, mixed uses.
Let me, let me interject two comments. I actually think. Retail is dead. Retail's dying. People are buying more and more things on the internet. I just, just had a conference. It's, you just cannot believe. What's happening to retail, independent of COVID nineteen. And you're never gonna get a shopping center there. You're never gonna get a, um, anything significantly commercial, office park. The work from home is now twenty-five percent of the workforce. Office parks located on the interstate are, are seeing increased vacancies. So you're not gonna have a commercial development there. And being across from Patton Park means it's attractive. For people, for residences. And the problem is we have a business district. That's kind of designed around. Small stores, offices, shopping. And there's, that's a dying industry. So, I mean, I'm happy to, to consider all sorts of reuse of that. Piece of land, but to me, the most obvious re, you know, good reuse of the land has to be residential in some way. Doesn't matter whether it's houses or townhouses or whatever else. It, it's just. That location is attractive and, uh, businesses and particularly retail and commercial businesses. Are, are dying. They're dying nationally. They're dying in Boston. They're shrinking.
I, I think, I've been trying to say actually for a bit now, I haven't found a jumping endpoint, but, uh, would it be overly weird to cut that site in half? In terms of the plan. As it's rather deep and anything off of Bay Road needing to be that deep. Is gonna be sort of an excessively large business for something that I would, A, foresee us utilizing, but B. See the town wanting. And so cutting it in half and saying. Let's say the back half is residential and somehow has an extension of that patent drive. You have like more of a residential neighborhood in the back and it shortens the use of commercial space. Can, you know, compresses it against Bay Road. So it's still part of our, we're not so much of a walk-in city, we're more of a driving city. So it's still part of that main drag. And still becomes useful in that way. Or is that too strange to?
I, I, I think that's the logical thing to do, but our zoning categories, we have residential, which is, you know. Two acres down to half an acre. And what we really would want is a higher density residential. And we don't, we don't, we don't actually have that in our zoning.
Uh, yeah.
Is the business, the business district doesn't actually allow, remember we had this discussion about the business dis- dis- district doesn't have a. A standard residential lot size or. It was meant for businesses.
I make a sug- can I make a suggestion? Um, we're not gonna solve this tonight, I hope. Um, so I'd like to go back to the idea of incorporating this in the master plan. And, and because it does have the commercial. Um, component to the master plan. And we certainly would, I would argue to look at our existing commercial district and its uses. And then the potential for expansion of that commercial district and potential for. Uh, uses in an expanded commercial district. So that we actually have some objective, independent information. And, uh, maybe schematics and drawings. So we can have an informed discussion. Um, and that may take a couple of years. But it certainly fits in with the direction we're going in terms of trying to figure out how to broaden our tax base. So I think it's part of the conversation and people will glom onto it or not. And so I, I don't think there's anything to lose and everything to gain.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you're right. We're not gonna solve it tonight. So. But yeah, whatever way to open up the dialogue in the future. And that's probably the right way to do it.
Yeah, I, I think as part of a structured conversation, rather than us just going off. Um, on a tangent on our own, you know, cause then, then it's sort of, well, there goes the planning board again. Um, if it's part of a larger townwide discussion on. You know, economics and land use, housing and commercial development. I think it would be a much more balanced and intelligent conversation.
Well, and that's true. And I, and I think though Bill's right. I mean, any kind of, um. Planning has to take into account that the real shift in, in, in how people work and where they work. And, and the nature of retail. I mean, it, it's, it's. You can't believe the trucks going through the neighborhoods now, you know, dropping off packages from Amazon. I mean, I don't know if you notice it, but I see it in my neighborhood all the time. The trucks are going through all the time. They come to my house sometimes twice a day.
Wow, you're a profligate shopper.
Well, no, I've been receiving gifts. Actually, my husband's a profligate shopper, but you know, you can, it, it's just, eh, eh, at some point. You know, you can, you can order something on Amazon now and it's there the next day.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, it, it's changing everything.
It'll be coming by drone in probably ten years.
Well, maybe less than that.
Real prospect too. Absolutely.
You know, that, that, that's, you're, you're right. I mean, that said, though, I think this, our town and in other small towns like this that are. You know, classified as somewhat wealthy towns that, you know, there's a lot of people that do still like to shop in the little shops, right? They, they love the little toy shop that Angela did this year and they love the honeycombs. They love, they love the little boutique places that. You know, you, you know, the owner, you can go there, you can get certain things and, you know, I, I personally. I do it, but I hate it. I hate shopping on Amazon.
Oh, yeah.
But, and I love to, if, you know, again, if there's something near me, I like to support it, especially now.
And it just doesn't, it doesn't add up to businesses. Services, services. Are still growing, but.
Yep.
Stores that sell goods or not. Even, even, even cute, cute goods. There's always empty.
No, I'm not, right. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're growing by any means. I guess saying there is a faction of people that support these things. And they're more likely to be, certain things are more likely to be supported in a town like ours than, than others. But. Yeah, I'm not saying it's a thriving. You know, uh, retail, um. You know, it's not thriving retail right now, but, um.
So, Patrick. Are you still awake?
Oh, yeah. I'm taking notes.
Um, can we incorporate some of this discussion in the master plan?
I, uh, absolutely will make that request and known. And I think it's entirely appropriate. This goes to how the town. Should be helping itself to improve fiscally over time. So. You know, it needs to be included.
Okay. I don't wanna stop the conversation, but I just figured we oughta figure out a productive next step and that might be it.
Okay.
All right. So I think we can, we can move on and, um, we have minutes to approve. And I know we, we didn't get, was it the December first minutes approved last time? Cause I know there was some bunch of changes that needed to be made, right?
Right. They were made.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the board, um, entrusted Marnie and, and to work those out. And those did get.
Okay. Okay.
And, uh, I think.
Thank you, Marnie.
You're welcome. Um. The, the, those December first minutes were not approved. At least the December fifteen minutes don't reflect that the December. First minutes were approved with the edits. So I think we do have to approve the December first meeting minutes.
I, yeah, that's where I was getting at. Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the December first. Meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor by roll call vote. Uh, Rick?
Rick Mitchell, aye.
Marnie.
Marnie, clout, aye.
Cory.
W, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Uh, Brian Stein is also an aye, unanimous. Um, moving on to the minutes of December fifteenth. Any comments on those?
Uh, I, I noted a few typos and had just a, a few minor corrections. Um, there, I can run through them or I can, um. Communicate with Ann and, and, um, get them of these minor changes made. I can go through the, 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 the problems that I had. They, they were not. Outrageous or anything. I think they were mostly just typos and one or two. Just.
Why don't you do that with, with Ann and then we'll do it as amended, just like we did this time.
Yeah, we'll send them out amended and vote next time.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you again, Marnie.
Yeah. Um.
Was my line of work. I can't let it go.
Is there anything else, Patrick?
Uh, let's see. I did wanna mention that, uh, I know that we've been discussing for a while. Some of the demographic information that, uh, uh, we had gotten from the school. Department. Uh, Bill had gotten some information from the assessor. I'd gotten some information from the assessor. I had, uh, you know, verified with the assessor that he thought that mine was appropriate and. And correct and was what he had provided. Uh, I took that information. I, uh, then ran the numbers based on the number of new students that. Uh, were generated as part of that new growth. Uh, as you'll recall in the, uh, the report I put together, there were twenty-six units that were created. Uh, during the period of twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen. Um, of that twenty-six units. Uh, you know, they were all non-age restricted. So. It didn't include Patton Ridge. It did not include Canter Brook. Uh, these were homes elsewhere. Uh, we did find that there were fourteen students. Uh, and then of those fourteen, there were actually four of them that had relocated. From another location that was, uh, already here in Hamilton. So. During that period, there were only ten, uh, yeah. Students, uh, that, uh, came to town. Uh, based on the new growth that we created. As, uh, I did the math on that, it equals point three eight students. Per each residential unit that was created during that period.
Okay, Patrick, I, you, you know, he, he gave me, actually, he gave me a spreadsheet of town property value, of town parcels. Uh, through you, you are in December. And that sheet has errors in it like crazy. I don't know what's going on. It doesn't line up with what he gave you. My house isn't in, in that sheet. There's several houses that he listed on you that, that are listed as being built in nineteen hundred on the town. That I thought it was the official town database of properties. So, um, let's let this go until we resolve and we actually get a complete list that's up to date from. Um, Spidel. And then, and then I think we should sit down with the school board and say, can you match this up? So we can see who this school showed, what, what kinda houses the school children are coming from. It's not just the new ones. We, we have.
No, that, that was the whole, that was the whole point, though, was new homes, new development.
Well, it's, it's. The point was really to assess whether larger homes have more kids in schools or whether smaller homes do. And what the fiscal impact is.
No.
You don't wanna just.
No, no, that, that was not your original question, Bill. Your original statement was new housing brings new students. And the point of this whole conversation was to determine whether in fact, from the records of the assessor and from the schools. Whether in fact that was true.
Well, the data that was given is contradicted, contradict, contradictory. So before we go saying anything, let's resolve the contradictions. Okay? And I would actually propose that we do a fiscal impact study. I'm actually willing to do it. Okay? You're willing to get an MIT professor to do a statistical study. Of where students are coming from. Okay? You just have to give me the da- data. I think it's a bargain. Well, so I'm not gonna charge thousands of dollars. I'm not, I'm not gonna charge thousands of dollars of consulting fees. I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna actually do it. But I need the data and I need data that's accurate. And right now I'm not convinced.
Also, Patrick just said that, I, I'm sorry who the assessor is, but. Came back and said that the data that Patrick gave to us. Was accurate.
Well, it's not. You can see, you can see there's several houses in that da- da- dataset that are. Different than the official records in the planning board. I don't know what, I mean, than in the assessor's files. that are different than the official records in the planning board. I don't know what, I mean, than in the assessor's files. I'm just, I sent Spidel, sent Spidel another request and I mentioned all of this. And I said, you know, can you spin through the tapes again? I don't know, I'm not sure what they have. It just has nothing to do with school attendance yet. I'm just trying to get an accurate listing of all the houses in town.
So how about this, Bill? We we have something that Patrick feels comfortable is accurate. You disagree. That's fine. So now it's on you to collect the data and determine.
Very happy to, I've gone back to Spidey, and I think that will work with Patrick and try and get a complete listing of properties. And then we'll go to the school board with it.
I I think it's important that, you know, we're shooting at the same target. And I'm not sure that your focus was the same as mine, Bill.
Well, I would, uh, my focus was on looking at where school age children are coming from. In houses that already exist, in houses that were built in the last ten years, we look at both. And then we say, can we draw any conclusions about what the fiscal impact is? Of building big houses, little houses, small houses, townhouses, whatever it is. So we actually have data on which to base an estimate about how many kids are gonna come in the school if we do one kind of development for versus another.
Including our surrounding towns, though, cuz someone moving from Wyndham to Hannibal tend to stay within our school district would be a new town regardless of the house they buy, wouldn't be much of a consideration to them.
I'm not sure you can do that, just as, just as Pat Patrick found that there were cases where people were just transferring. They were still in the school system. They were, you know, but their people, their parents were moving from one house to another. You have to look at every child and what their address is. Match it up with the assessor's file.
So, so wait, so the originally, like Rick and I said, this started as new homes in the last whatever, five, ten years, whatever it was. And who's moving into those homes? And again, looking at maybe what size they are. And, I mean, we know there aren't any tiny ones being built. But now it seems to be you wanna look at where every kid in town is living and what size house they're in.
That's a much better way. And then you can sort it by whether it's a new house or whether it's an old house.
Well, we know, we know the new houses, though. We know that.
No, we don't, because we have a conflict.
No, we don't, Bill.
We do.
No. The one you're talking about from nineteen hundred on Settler's Lane, that that house is in the assessor's database correctly. I looked it up myself like weeks ago now.
And so did, so did I, but it's in Patrick's list as being, having been built since two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, on Settler's Lane, yeah.
You said, so why is it in the assessor's file as a nineteen hundred? It is in my day day data? So he gave me a bad download.
But again.
Point is, I wanted a good download that I could take to the school board. And he gave me one that had seemingly a lot of flaws and inconsistencies. I'm just, I'm just pointing that out. I'm happy with what he gave me.
I think the one that Patrick has, though, is the one that he.
That's, that's, that that is a handwritten written list of thirty houses built in the last.
No, it's not. It's not a handwritten list. There were comments that Patrick made on it, but it was a list from the assessors dated by year, going by year.
You mean, a spreadsheet?
Essentially, yeah, it was.
No, he gave me a spreadsheet.
Twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And I just tabulated each of those and pulled out the senior units uh, to give me the the final number, which, you know, I did discuss with you.
I understand that, but the file that he gave you that we asked him for of all the houses in town doesn't match up with that. He gave that to you.
Of all the houses in town, that wasn't the ask.
That was, that was what we decided to ask for and he gave.
No, no, no.
Bill, you're moving the goalposts again. It was twenty fifteen to nineteen, I guess, or nine.
Why do you object?
Not objecting to anything.
Why do you, why, why, if we're doing the study of recent houses, don't we look at also houses built twenty years ago and thirty years ago?
Well, because demographics change. Bill, you keep, as Brian said, you keep moving the goalposts here.
What, but what? Are moving into town. Okay, moving into town is not the same as building a new house.
That, but that's where it started, though. You talked about new homes. Who is moving into?
Why, why can't we do a correct fiscal impact analysis?
But that's what, this is what you would.
No, 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 go look at the U L I fiscal impact analysis. You line up all the houses in in the town and how many kids are in the school system from each kind of house. And then you draw your entrances in that. You don't take the last twenty houses built when you have two thousand houses in the town. That's just not the way to do it.
Can I, can I ask a question here? To what end, to what end?
To find out whether smaller houses have fewer kids and bigger houses have bigger kids. And whether, whether the people who've moved into a given house more recently have more or less kids than 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 the, than the established residents.
So we're look at the existing housing stock and saying, well, in smaller houses, there are fewer kids. And in larger houses, there are more kids. I I'm still trying to figure out.
I'm not actually sure that's true. That's a real.
Whatever, whatever the answer is, I'm I'm trying to figure out how do we use the data because.
Then we wind up saying, all right, if you build houses of this size and they have this many children, what is their fiscal cost to the town? How much tax revenue are they bringing in? How much tax revenue are they bringing in? And how many students are they adding to the school system?
So.
Fiscal, that's what a fiscal impact analysis looks at.
So to, so we'll know where the kids are coming from. That's a, that's different from your original proposition.
Well, I originally wanted a fiscal impact study. If you guys don't wanna do a fiscal impact.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm trying.
That's fine. I don't wanna spend the time.
That's not what you originally wanted, though. You, you, at some point, yes, you talked about a fiscal impact study, but this original exercise was exactly what came out was the new homes in the last whatever, six or seven years, whatever it was. What are they? Where were they and who moved into them, basically? And, you know, who of school age moved into them?
I mean, it's kind of not really relevant since half the houses that have been built in the last five years have been senior houses.
Well, you're right.
Kind of like a bad sample. You're not gonna learn much by sampling that. It's the silly way of doing it. I never really wanted. I never came up with two thousand and fifteen. I never said, you know, I said maybe recent, last thirty or forty years. That would be fine.
That's the first time I've heard that, Bill, the recent last thirty or forty years for this. Come on.
Well.
Again, you're you're moving, you're moving the goalposts here.
So anyway, um, uh, Bill, you can do whatever you want. Just figure out what it is you wanna present and get the data that you feel is accurate and present the results.
That's, that's, that's what I'm, that's actually what I'm trying to do.
Right, so.
I I wound up getting different data from the assessor than Patrick did. So I wanna work, work with Patrick to resolve that.
Yeah, good.
Okay, fine.
All right, anything else?
Uh, let's see, our next meeting is January the nineteenth.
Yep.
Um, I also wanted to mention that, uh, we need to start preparing the twenty twenty annual report for the planning board. I know that Richard had been kind enough to do it largely for the last two years. Uh, someone else may wanna assist this time.
Okay, and when does that need to be done?
Uh, we should have that done by the end of February.
Okay. Do we know yet if we're getting an application in when from Larry on Essex Street?
Uh, he told me last week that they were continuing with their investigation. Uh, he couldn't give me a date, but he does expect to be submitting that application uh, a few weeks from now.
Okay.
They had found a lot of ledge on the property, which they already were aware of. But they've been documenting how much and where.
Yep. Okay.
He also said that he, you know, intended to do a robust outreach process for the public.
Yep. So, I mean, that's potentially a March type thing by the time you advertise it and everything.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
Um, just as an F Y I, I may have said this before, Marnie is aware of this. Uh, we have had a P L submitted to the town by Habitat uh, for a ten-unit residential project on the land area that wraps around the cell tower at four thirty-four Asbury Road, Asbury Street, rather.
Great, and where does that start?
That's, that's been going on for some time.
Yeah.
It's been going on for some time, but this is their formal application, uh, which will be to the Z B A. Uh, at their first meeting in February, I believe that's February the third. Generally, Z B As do send the report out to other boards that, uh, have purview and they always send it to the planning board. So, uh, on their behalf, I'll take a liberty after I speak with Kim Deedle, the chairman of the Z B A, to send it to the planning board. So you can give it a look.
Okay, great. All right, anything else? All right.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, second. Corey, second. Okay, Rick made the motion, Corey seconded. Um, all those in favor, roll call here, Rick?
Uh, Rick Mitchell, aye.
Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, aye.
Corey?
Corey, W, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
And Brian Stein is an aye, unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, guys.
Okay.
See you in a couple of weeks.